Really interesting. Yeah, really interesting how he considered the fold so heavily because people just under bluff in these four of all tournaments. It's really, really interesting.
Yeah, I mean, what are his bluffs? You know, like if we really think about it, like sure ace high, like ace high has some show out value in that ace five. And when he raises the term with maybe some backdoor diamond draw or something like that and actually gets called in on this kind of board. Like what, what hands do you have into folding?
Um, and it's gonna have some misdraws and things too. So I think calling is the only option myself. Let's see if Boogaloo uh got away from it. Woo, call a six.
So this is close between call-
Really interesting. So call a six, raise the seventy-five hundred is ten points. And I'm gonna say he said that because this is a very bad player. And so he thinks the very bad player is gonna stack off here with horse queens a lot. I'm gonna guarantee that's what he's gonna say. Very interesting though. I thought call for sure was the right answer. I never am in this spot. I don't know. Um, interesting spot too. I, I, I think this is a little bit of a lesson for everyone out there too. A lot of times the hands we want to float with, like this one, are better as, as raises. So this is kind of pause that guy to break.
Yeah, and he was kind of an echo chamber for us there saying, you know, we just get better hands to call and worse things. Like he's going to have some gut shots in his hand. He's going to have spades, he's going to have king X. And we kind of, I mean, we kind of identify kind of what cards are going to be bad for us on future streets. And we, we're aware how to proceed on those cards.
Absolutely.
So yeah, that's a very good point. Right, right, right.
That was the best. You did say everything. You won.
You won. I, I, I just, you know, I'm just.
Alright, so, ooh, look at this. You're not opening this. He just looked at this. You're not opening this.
Cut off high deck low jack, under the gun one.
Come on now, okay. I um. So, let's see if he-
He's gotta open it or there wouldn't be a hand.
You, yeah, he wouldn't be equipped.
I'm already down on points.
You're already down on points in real life. Now, obviously, you're gonna cheat, but-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna evolve.
You're gonna, yeah, you're gonna adapt, right?
Ah, this play.
I am going to cry if he says he's folding here. If he's like, yeah, you should be folding this in this kind of tournament and you were actually right. Alright, cool.
Wah wah. Ah, yes. I just wanna say for the record, this is the best three-point score I've ever gotten in my life. Because the right answer was fold.
Good, right?
But you heard what he said. I'm on the table.
This is a three K.
Here comes the excuses. Ten points fold. It says right here.
The excuses to open. If your table is particularly tight and weak, welcome to the five dollar two K world. I mean, you know, the eleven dollar ten K, I'm opening this. Yeah, for sure.
This is the best three points of my life.
Oh, that's hilarious. And everybody's-
Nailed it. What the hell kind of play is that from King Queen? Who in their- Who does that?
Who the hell?
Jonathan Little's an absolute crusher, so it's nice to have him, especially coaching.
Yeah, I agree. And I always love playing right after sessions like this because I feel like my, my brain's warmed up. I'm thinking through the things and, and so it's a good way to start your session for sure.
Alright, alright guys, this is it.
What's up, you wanna give a gist? He was saying Narco Con was playing about deep pipping about twenty-eight percent of hands. He had been very aggressive in this uh ten dollar buy-in. And here are the options to fold, to call, to raise the twelve hundred, raise the-
What?
Wait a minute, he made it eight hundred and my man's given absolutely twelve, fourteen hundred X. So it's already getting uh kind of spicy.
That's so nasty. To be on the site with these other crushers, you know, well-known poker public figures is pretty exciting. I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, I didn't mention that when I was kind of giving a little intro here too, you know, Assassinato, Matt Affleck, John Little, uh all coaches on the site. So very highly respectable, quality poker content.
Yep, Evan Jarvis as well, you know, remember Evan Jarvis, Matt Affleck, Assassinato, John Little. Uh, so I guess that just makes sense. He just have the ace of clubs in his hand. That's interesting though. I thought that was interesting.
I'm gonna watch you now. You didn't do that bad. Forty-five.
I like how you just pat me on the back. You didn't do that bad. Well, yeah, good job, buddy.
The back.
I got the higher score in the first one. I got the higher score in the first one. So, you know, we're one for one, buddy.
I just wanna know.
Calling guys. Let's see if we're good. Similar situation. That's pre-flop? I think it's pre. Alright guys, we're checking right there. Oh, fuck.
When you're facing a min raise or just a touch more than a min raise and there's an anti-inplay, which is gonna be the case in most tournaments, I think, going forward. You want to defend pretty wide. If your opponent's making a two-
Alright, cool. Uh, you going fourteen hundred?
I'm going fourteen hundred, guys.
We'll go call with the armadillo hat.
Alright, and-
I would fold a game though, for the record, in case I was, we're winning it.
Ah, you won. You win. I, 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 I have to concede. You win.
Fourteen K.
Fourteen K, let's do it.
No, now we can't win. This is a pretty rough spot because-
Damn it.
Mm-hmm. Where you gonna get my chat?
Get my chat.
They like, they like, they like naughty things. They like just beer, alcohol, you know.
Alright, let's do uh, I can do a ten dollar ACR giveaway.
A ten dollar ACR giveaway courtesy of my man Toe. For me beating that ass heads up in this, sorry. We'll do this. We'll do, we'll have to do it at least once a week, man. And then, you know, we'll do it. We'll do it every week a couple times.
So, it's time.
I guess we gotta give out ten bucks to each, each other's communities. We'll just do our own ten, ten dollar free roll for each. Or is that, does that sound fair?
Yes. Do you know what this means?
You win. I give his chat ten bucks. Take it.
So that's cool because we have two ties and it'll win from you and it'll win from me. This is like the epic battle. It's perfect. It's great.
Yeah, we're, we're even stevens.
This is awesome. I love it.
You know who-
Stop. We got a giveaway going. Let's run the giveaway for the ten dollar ACR winner. Closing the giveaway, drawing the winner, my man Sevz, we're getting the ten dollar ACR giveaway for this one. What up, party people? It's the Saturday stream. It's dark in here. Jesus. How y'all living? How y'all living? How y'all living? It's been a good couple of days on the streets. What's up, guys? Mendo Bruce out there, Cyrus, Matt, Holden is nuts, all here to get better. Rad Dad in the house, what's up? Marlin in the house, Mrs. Ginger's in the house, all the regs. Look at that, all the killers in the house. What's up, guys? Good to see you. Here waiting for Sixes to call me. Should be calling me any second now. I've been talking to him. I know he's out there. I know he's out there. Bourbon for the win says ginger. Well, there you go. I drink more scotch than bourbon. Bourbon's good too, though. Scotch is kinda harsher, for sure. We had a bit of scotch last night. Oh, here he is.
I should post all the wins and all that good shit, but-
What up?
How you doing?
We came in right in time to hear the end of your sick brag.
Yeah. That's what I like to do. I'm all about bragging.
Hey, I'm all about it, man. We killed it yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday was fun. Playing a few tournaments, slightly tilted and buzzed and winning. You can't complain.
That's funny. I was the same except for the tilted part because I'm cool as a cucumber. But I put down a little bit of whiskey, got uh three podiums. What up? You took a podium yesterday?
Yeah. It was good times, man. It's been a good couple of weeks. I cannot complain. Just that these past three weeks have been really, really, really good.
Yeah, it's funny, you know, I was busy and didn't study much and um didn't feel like I was playing my A-game. And then hooked up with you for a couple of days and then as soon as I did that, all these podiums started happening. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a coincidence.
Yeah, we've been studying our ass off and I got a really good one in with Jess, uh Jess D T O yesterday, I should say. Yeah, you missed that one, man. We went over hand history. It was fun. So, yeah, the studying, you know how we, you know how I do, man. Four or five days a week if possible.
Yeah, yeah. I need to get through this little uh slump here and then get back, you know, my, my day job's getting in the way of my real job.
Right, right. Yeah, I don't let anything distract me from my goals. So we gotta do what we gotta do. But hey, how's everyone doing? What's up, Toes chat? What's up, everyone in my chat? Good morning, guys. You guys ready to get better today? Let's do it. Study stream time. We're gonna go over some quizzes. If you're not familiar, I'm sure you guys have heard the splil a million times by now. But um, yeah, here you can sign up for a free account um here, get access to these quizzes that we're doing today. Um, you know, charts, all kind of training materials, as well as opportunities for staking, some of the premium materials, really good webinars. Uh, just the list goes on and on with, you know, all the stuff. You could study forever and not get through all the material. I mean, there's six hundred and seventy-five motherfucking quizzes. That's a lot.
Yeah, man. Yeah, man. Next place is point P C in my chat or Sixes chat for the link. Uh, you can sign up for free. Or uh, or, and get a bunch of free content, or you can go for the premium and get a crap load of content. We got, we got them streaming in my chat. Eat the cats in the house, Tom Price in the house.
Good morning, Ship. What's up, Eek? What's up, guys? Good morning, my family. You guys ready to do this? Let's get in there and see what we got.
I see a few ones that like jump out at me for the day. Like I see there's another Faraz Jaka one on there.
Oh, I mean, Faraz fucking was, that shit was beautiful.
Then I see another twenty-three-year-old drinking a Red Bull one.
Oh, we gotta have that.
Just for a stretch.
My kids are being super extra, so I'm sure I'll get interrupted a couple times.
Yeah, whatever. Saturday.
Alright, go ahead. Go, go get a tissue. You're good. Alright, um, yeah, so let's get right in there. Let's see. Do I wanna go straight to the Faraz? Man, wait a minute. Seven sixty-eight. I don't see the new Faraz one.
Seven forty-nine?
Oh, yeah. Damn, they added that many in a week. Holy smokes. That's a lot. Okay. Damn, they added a lot, bro.
They did.
I'm excited. Yeah, there's a lot of new material. Um, so yeah, let's do it. Uh, seven forty-nine is the win eleven hundred one mil guarantee. A tournament both of us would play, you know. If I was out there this summer, I'd probably shot take something like this, but yeah, let's do it.
Right on buying range for live tournaments?
Yes, sir.
Alright, buddy. Let's uh, let's run that bad boy.
Let's do it.
So here we are in the win eleven hundred one million guarantee. With Jack nine clubs on the button. We're about forty-three big blinds deep. Fold to us. And our options here are to call, min raise to four hundred, raise two and a half X to five hundred, or raise three X to six hundred.
Alright, guys. Here we are. Jack nine suited on the button. Easy up on the button, says Matt. Standard five hundred Cyrus, what size, Matt? What size? What size y'all going? Five hundred, five hundred, five hundred, five hundred. Rad Dad says five hundred.
Alright.
We got five hundred strolling in my chat right now.
So, yeah, five hundred, five or six hundred. Ship says, B Q says, five hundred. Yeah, everyone seems to, it seems like this thing where people live feel less inclined to min raise as you would online. You know, people just wanna go slightly bigger live. I kinda get it. I don't give a fuck if everybody calls. I would min raise here. Um, but I, I, I can see five hundred, you know, being fine, but I would go four hundred personally.
Hmm. Yeah, a lot of five hundreds, Marlon going six hundred. I agree. Um. I agree. Uh, I would bin raise here too, live.
Like if we get three bet, you know, the price is better for us to call in position. Um, we don't care if they continue with a wider range in the big blind when we get to play the hand in position. Uh, so me personally, four hundred, but five hundred is probably gonna be the answer.
I think five hundred, okay. I think the other difference too is that like if we were uh all a hundred bigs deep, that would be different, right?
Yeah, we're, we're effectively a little shorter, so yeah, could get smaller.
I'm going back to min raising, for sure.
Yeah, I'm gonna go four hundred, although I think um there are situations live. Um, sometimes I do just think going a little bit bigger is better, you know. Especially in mid-position and shit like that. You're, you're probably gonna go multi-weight every single time if you min raise. Because people will look at you like you're not getting away with this shit, you know, so. I think we want to make it five hundred or six hundred so we can stack our port, our port. But I understand what you're saying about keeping it smaller so we can flat the three bet two post. Yeah. Oh, I see what you're saying, for sure.
Well, not only that, but also because our stack is four to three bigs deep and, you know, we can save lines by going smaller and just, you know, have more room to do more things more often and-
Yeah, keeping a smaller S C R, smaller S P Rs.
Yeah.
You know. Alright, I'm gonna go four hundred and see what we, what he says.
Do I go four hundred or I go five hundred with the army?
Hmm, five hundred's probably gonna be right, but I'm, I'm gonna live. I'm gonna just do what I would do here.
I'm not gonna deviate. That killed me last week. Fuck it.
Yeah.
Four hundred.
Let's do it.
So the idea of play here is just to raise two and a half X to five hundred. And the reason I like to go a little bigger here is because when we're on the button raising, the big blind is gonna be able to call with a lot of hands. Whereas when we're ra, when we raise under the gun, for example, the big blind is gonna have to play a little bit tight because of how strong our range is. So we can get away with, you know, a min raise or a two point two X when we're, when we're under the gun. But when we're late position here, I like to size up a little bit. Um, so folds out, you know, some more hands from the big blind. Um, the only time I might make an exception to that is when the effective stack is around, you know, fifteen to twenty big blinds, where we don't wanna give them too good of a price to reshove, then I might tone this down to a min raise of two point two X. But I'm here definitely going with the two and a half X. Um, limping, I don't think we really need to start limping here. Um, once we're shallower and we are worried about getting reshoved, there's three bet a lot. Um, we could argue some limps, but here I don't think it's necessary. And um, you also could go a little larger, but I also don't think that's necessary, although I don't hate it, but yeah, five hundred just a bit of the optimal size here. We get a call out of the big blind. They check. Board is five, three, seven, and with a flush draw for us. And uh, our options are to check, bet four hundred, bet eight fifty, or bet one thousand.
I feel like this is gonna get interesting, guys. Yeah, five hundred not that big of a deal. I think it was interesting, well, let me wait for Sixes to come back.
Yeah, I'm here. I mean, I'm-
Um, five hundred was cool, like whatever, but um, I thought it was interesting that he mentioned two point two. Because actually, when I'm thinking about it live, I do do that. I would go like, you know.
Four fifty if there's fifty chips.
Yeah, something like that.
I get that as well. Like it's, it's a big waste of time. I'm either gonna throw in four hundred and if I don't have four hundred, I might just go five hundred. Like, I, 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 I think it's moot and I think it is-
I do too.
Fallen kind of preferential. He acknowledges that he's gonna continue wider, but I don't give a fuck. I hope he does. It's fine.
Yeah, we have position and hopefully skill edge. There's a question for you. If you have a good player in the blinds, are you more likely to go five hundred? I think that makes sense.
Alright, yeah, I'm sorry. My son just came in, uh, made his uh weekly appearance. Alright, so here this board, oh, did you ask me a question? I'm sorry, I didn't even hear you.
I did. I said, if you are facing someone who is, you deem to be good in the blinds, are you more likely to go bigger?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yes. I mean, but that's not gonna be applicable, applicable eh, a lot in this stuff we're playing, but in eleven hundred, yeah, sure.
In a match, if one of these guys, if Faraz is in the blinds and you're on the button, then yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I'm gonna go slightly bigger. And that's, those are the only cases I'm gonna go bigger. And that rare, that never happens online too often.
Tom Price says, are you trying to show an image that you're a good player by betting a pretentious amount like two point two? No, I just think it's a weird psychology thing where it's just a little bit more than a min, but pretty damn close to a min. It's been as many as possible without being a min bet, basically. And it's kinda like, you know, they sell a car for, you know, twenty-nine, nine ninety-nine or whatever. It's that little mental thing. Um, so I think that's why, Tom. Um, about this spot, um, you see better or no? This is where I'm really interested because I do things a little differently here than, than most. So we'll see what Faraz thinks about how I, I would do it.
Yeah, what is your chat saying? I gotta bet four hundred. Ship wants to go one K to push his equity with two overs and a flush draw. Um, since we're gonna be doing five versus a single pair hand here. Um, Frosty wants to go one K. Doctor H J go four hundred. Very split sizing um here. He says, I want to get our stack in on future streets whether we hit or not. So he's planning on using over cards. If he is just called as a bluff, setting up. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I got a couple, three eight fifties.
I like that.
Four four hundreds, four eight fifties and four four hundreds. No, three four, three eight fifties and four four hundreds. And then Tom Price sneaking in with the one K if you can get it in. Um, I think we're too deep to get this all in. You know, as a, you know, as a bluff, as a semi bluff. So that part is out. So. I don't know, like, it's kind of a big blind defendy type of board.
Right, one we would expect to get check raise on a higher frequency than other textures.
Right.
You would say?
Right.
Um, and then in this check raise range, he's going to have some draws. He's also gonna have more seven fives. He's gonna be able to check raise six, eight. So there's worse hands, worse flush draws, but there's also a handful of better flush draws. He also has obviously way more four, six than we do because he has four, six offsuit. I would have four, six suited because I would open that here.
Yep.
Um, yeah, this is uh interesting. So you're almost sounding like you wanna advocate checking back.
Yep.
Then you can bluff catch. You can always call a turn bet. And then if he ever checks back the river, we can turn our hand into a bluff or we can just make the best hand.
Send her toe one-on-one.
That sounds, yeah, I mean, we work together a lot. That sounds actually pretty reasonable here. Uh, we really, I think with forty big blinds, I'm not really too happy about bet getting it in. I guess I would.
I mean, we're in good shape against seven. We're in good shape against a hand like pocket eights. Uh, we're not doing so great against two pairs and-
You don't think you would check rate, uh, he would three bet pocket eights at this stack depth?
Like that's one of the ones on the line, right? Sometimes, sometimes, yes, sometimes no.
I don't know, man. It has to be seventy percent, seventy thirty or something like that. I think it would be a higher frequency of three bet than flat, in my opinion, even for general pop.
Three bet. Like I'm in that category.
Yeah, because you don't wanna get it in with, for forty-five bigs or whatever we started the hand with, or forty-two bigs.
But it's close. I mean, like I would get thirty to thirty-five and wouldn't even blink. So it's not that, it's not that far off for me.
With a hundred bigs, I'd probably fucking three bet get it in with eights, but-
Yeah.
I don't know. Um, so yeah, I'm kinda feeling a check as well, um, with this stack depth. Uh, it's a board that hits him a little bit more. We are gonna just get it in versus pair straight draw, pair flush. Well, we blocked the pair flush draw combos. Yeah, I mean, either go big or check and push our equity here with two overs and a flush draw.
We got a lot of comments in the chat here. Uh, Jonathan would go four hundred. This guy's gonna go eight fifty, says Joe. Marlon says, I like to put one K and then put him in touch pot.
I kinda like eight fifty.
Straight stored forward players. Ship, what is a lot of ace X?
Hmm.
Uh, Rad Dad says, when you have the range advantage, you're supposed to bet big and not frequent. Fair. Um, pairs would be re-raised unless you were planning ahead with double barrels and returns blind. It's one of them, yes, that big, but we have too much equity to fold this hand. Agreed.
Yeah, let's uh, let's do it. I don't know what I'm gonna do here. I, I, I like, I, I get, I get our line because I take uh this line as well where we check. We can always call a turn bet.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Uh, a lot of turns are gonna have, help us pick up equity. And then a river, our hand's fairly disguised. He might um use a club as a card to use as a bluff um as well when we don't see bet here. So yeah, I kinda feel a check. Um, we have a lot of equity and we can just turn our hand into bluff in some cases as well.
Tom Price on a one K, kept coming in with an eight fifty right at the buzzer. Uh. It's time between four fifty and eight fifty. I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna check and see what happens. Um, I'm really curious.
Yeah, I'm very curious of how Faraz approaches this spot as well. Um, but uh, if I am gonna bet, I do kinda like what Chip said and other people are leaning towards pushing our equity here. Because we could just bet call off. Um, or we can just bet and use a lot of cards that are good for our range as barrels on the turn. Uh, where we just semi bluff, you know, if it's like a ten or something like that. We just semi bluff and like really push our equity and make it, put a lot of his fives and threes and weak sevens and make them indifferent.
It's a common line with this hand.
Yeah, so I, I, I do, I do think that. It is, what is, and we cap our range, um.
But I've been checking this particular board with a lot of hands.
You're not checking it with aces.
I mean, I, I'm probably not, but I'm definitely considering it's like damn close. Like of all the low conord, court, co- coordinated, of all the low co- coordinated boards, um, to check back with aces, this is definitely damn close to that, right?
Ah, not I said to Cat. I'd be betting the fuck out of aces here and then just snapping.
I think I'm betting it too, but it's getting close is my point. Like it's not that far.
I get you. I get you. I get you. Yeah, it's close, but it ain't quite there for me where I'm tracking. But alright, let's do it. I'm on team bet big now.
Ah, you flipped on me, you son of a-
I did, I did, I did. I think Faraz, I don't know. It's gonna be interesting. Let's see.
I'm gonna check, but I'm curious. I could definitely see big bet. That's definitely coming on.
Alright, let's do it.
So the first thing to ask yourself in this spot is, you know, whose flop is this? Is this favoring the big blind or is this favoring us as the pre-flop raiser? And this board is definitely favoring the big blind. Um, so when that happens, you're gonna see two things. You're gonna see that we need to check back a lot more of our range. And the times we do bet, we wanna bet larger. So because of that, um, I'm gonna go for a bet of eight fifty here as my favorite option. Um, my second most favorite option is uh checking. So let's start with that betting option. So betting eight fifty, the reason why we want to go larger here is we get a lot of hands to fold. Like king eight with the club, jack queen with the club, um, you know, king X with the backdoor heart draw. Uh, there's a lot of benefit to getting those hands out, um, just to kinda clear out equity and of course, you know, some of those hands beat us right now. And um, you know, if we bet small, we're just kinda putting in uh money for hands that beat us to kinda have a bigger pot. Um, so definitely the largest size for the checking. Um, so the way we wanna think about this is if we need to check a lot here, that means we also want to have some stronger hands in our checkback range. Because if we just bet this every time we have, you know, a pair and a flush draw and then we just give up a lot, now we're gonna be so in balance that every time we check, our villain can just bet that and print money off us. So, you know, we're gonna take some stronger hands like this and, you know, some, some pairs. And we're gonna throw them in our checkback range so that we have hands we can continue with on the turn. Um, so that's my second favorite option. And the third would be betting a thousand. I'm definitely not against that. That's definitely, you know, not bad to go bigger, but I, I don't think it's necessary. So we'll stick with the eight fifty. So we'll go ahead and this time we will bet the eight fifty. Um, player just calls. And the turn is a four of hearts, putting a backdoor flush draw out there. Player checks and our options are to check, bet twelve hundred, bet twenty-four hundred, or bet thirty-six hundred.
This is pretty easy, right?
Um, you know what's funny is that I love when we say, okay, there's two lines here that make a lot of sense. And we go down the rabbit hole of both lines, and then we pick whatever we pick, and we play the video, and. The coach then echoes both of what, exactly what we said, talks about both paths, talks about the benefits of both, goes down both rabbit holes. I love when that happens, you know.
Yeah, it shows we're getting better, you know, we're using the correct thought processes that are some of the top players are using in some of these spots, and that's very encouraging.
Hmm.
You know, um, but yeah, I mean, he did, he made a lot of good points there, and, um. I guess on this board, ships in, how do we balance our checks? Like, I'm trying to think of what I would check here, uh, so.
On the turn or on the flop?
On a flop.
Um, I told you, like, this is a wet enough board where I, against a big blind defense, I'm checking back a lot of things, like. I, I would bet aces a lot of the times, but I would check though, sometimes I would definitely, um, be like, I wouldn't be. This isn't a board that I would be c-betting, like, with a hand like king queen. I mean, like, that doesn't have any equity, this board just smacks the big blind range, I think I'm just check giving up, man, like that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the, I guess the.
And for the value side of it. Um, be five X, um, I would be more likely to check back the ace high wheel draws. Um. Yeah, I think that's it, and I think I do check back aces on this board a decent amount, but I would bet things like jacks for protection, you know, and things like that.
Right, cuz when he calls, this happens, and you have aces, right, and you're like, oh.
What are you now? Turn your aces into bluff?
Yeah, I mean, I I I don't.
Check back here, call a fucking three, two, uh, two thirds pop bet on the river?
Yeah, sure. Let's see, I just wanna ask the question to chat, is anyone betting here?
Hmm.
I mean, is, I I just wanna, is anyone betting?
We got some, uh, while you wait for an answer to that, we got, need to develop, uh, read on the coach. Not about the score either, but like, you can't, it's like, I mean, you do wanna get in the coach's mind, but it's about the good poker, right? A Tom Price check folding, Cyrus is checking, NRG is checking, hump in the house, what up buddy? Check, didn't get any more equity, not a good barrel card, says Rad Dad, Joe's checking. Matt's checking, Cyrus checking, eek, throwing out twenty-four hundred like a boss. Where's Marlin, says Hold'em's that, fire, fire, fire.
So.
What are you doing?
Dude, I mean, right now, I see Eek's betting twenty-four, Ship's betting the turn, trying to get a three X or five X to fold. Um, somebody says, do we have the best hand right now? The answer is no. Um, but the, the thing arises, like, we have equity, they can make us the best hand, and it would fucking be a tragedy. To not get to see this river and get check raised, um, cuz he can't just have way more six X than we do, you know?
Tom Price says, straightforward players calling with any ace X or probably, I don't think they're randomly floating like queen jack here, so. Um, there's that, um, yeah.
I, I mean, I'm just not betting, uh.
Oh, that's funny, cuz I am totally betting, if, if I bet flop on a board like this, I'm a hundred percent repping the six.
You're gonna rep the six here.
Two pair, yeah, because I'm gonna make him, I have the six unless you tell me you have the six.
I guess.
I don't have showdown value.
Why does my nit brain wanna check, dude?
I don't know, you're the, supposed to be the.
I know, I mean.
I saw you get up and yell at yourself last night about how I can't control myself.
I can't stop, yeah, I just, yeah, it's, it's bad anymore, I have a problem. But this just feels like I have, ah, we, god, dude. We're gonna bet hold?
Uh, Webmother says, first time I hear, how's the structure? So, uh, we do this every Saturday web, uh, me and my partner create the sixes, do this every single Saturday. We uh, create a content for pokercoaching.com, Jonathan Little's, um, training site, and so we do this, we do these quizzes. Um, there'll be a different spot like this, you pick which answer you want, we'll get a poll from the thing, we'll tell you what we would do. Then we'll pick an answer, you'll see a little point total out of ten on, uh. What the coach is doing this quiz, things you should do, and then we'll talk it out, um, feel free to get in here and tell us what you think, this is your time to be a chat pro. X, mission point PC in my chat, X, mission point PC, in sixes chat, you can sign up on pokercoaching.com for free. And get a bunch of free quizzes, homeworks, and all that stuff, and if you're so inclined, you can sign up for the premium and get a bunch more, so check all that out, there you go, there's your spiel, welcome, glad to have you.
Nah, this is the big blind, good morning Fallon, um, yeah, I don't know, guys, I, I'm gonna just do what I would do, I mean, I feel like. I don't wanna, I I've, I've, I've seen enough sims piles and to know when we have this equity, and we get check raised, and we can't realize it, it's a fucking disaster. It's fucking a disaster not to realize this equity, and we, he has more six, I mean, he can have enough six X in his call range, I'm checking, it's nitty, I'm bad, I'll take it.
I'm twenty-four hundred all day, overbet is super sexy, I don't think we need to overbet in this spot, Marlon, we're gonna bet two thirds, and then like, he's gonna fucking have it or not, like. We bet two thirds here, we force him to have two pair better, and that's it, like, everything else should just go away.
Yeah, I mean, I do, I agree, like, we're gonna get all of his single pair hand twofold. Like, when we bet this turn, um, so you're going twenty-four, I'm gonna check, I'm gonna see what happens.
Rad Dad agrees with you, he says, sorry, so that's okay, I'm not mad. And even if Faraz doesn't do this here, I'll tell you this, like, I'm gonna exploit these types of players.
I don't even know if it's about exploiting, it's about range, it's like, how these boards interact with this range, when he continues to our c-bet. On five, seven, three, he's just going to have a six X in part of his range, it feels like a lot, dude, I mean, he just does.
I'm a force.
And if he has a two pair that he doesn't fold, or a six X, and then he decides to check raise us here on the turn. We just set equity on fire because we can't call a check raise, so I'd rather get there, and then maybe bluff river, or just realize my equity. That's how I feel, um, our stack is kind of, you know, our utility is kind of important as well.
If I bet twenty-four hundred here.
I don't know.
I still have like twenty-five bigs, shit.
Yeah, I mean, we can get semi bluff, he can make our lives hell with some semi bluffs, like backdoor heart draw and a five, I just don't wanna face that smoke, man. I just don't want it. And he can float backdoor, like the coach said, so betting then is bad. I don't know, I don't, I'm not saying it's bad, this is just how I feel, I'm very curious to see what Faraz thinks here, um. I just wanna realize this equity at this point. Alright, ship, I know I'm bad, buddy. He's exploiting and I'm checking, so let's go.
Sissy.
So, here, we're gonna want you to do a lot of checking, because that's not a very good card for us. Uh, this card definitely favors uh, the big blind, and we're also gonna be doing a lot of small betting if we do decide to bet. Um, so, my favorite option here is just to check back, um, like I said, we're gonna check back a lot of hands, we're gonna be checking back. You know, a lot of our over pairs, um, king, screens, jacks type thing, we might bet some hands like. Pocket eights, pocket nines, because they need a little bit more protection, um, you know, eights is also blocking, you know, hands like six feet. Uh, so it fits there a little bit, um, less likely to get check raised, that type of thing. Um, and, and same goes with the flush draws, we're gonna check back a lot of our flush draws, but we wanna make sure we do have some flush draws in our betting range. Um, that way, you know, what we bet and the club comes, you know, we can still represent some flushes, um. I'd, I'd also heavily prefer having the eight in our hand if we're going to bet, so you know, some hands like, you know, ace eight of clubs, king eight of clubs.
So you block six, eight?
Jack eight of clubs, I highly prefer those, here, there's just not a lot of reasons to bet. Um, it's nice to kinda be able to realize our equity, so I'm gonna go with check as uh, my favorite option here. And if we are going to bet, I definitely gonna go the smaller size, uh, twelve hundred, I think that's an okay play as well. And the reason we can go small here is just, there's just not a lot of reason to bet big. So, kinda one thing you can ask yourself is, you know, wha- wha- if, if we're betting here. We're really just targeting, trying to get some five X, some three X, some four X to fold.
Yep.
So, just ask yourself, what's a size I can bet that's gonna be really annoying to those hands, um, and I think twelve hundred does the job there. Uh, would you bet bigger than that? You're kinda just gonna get like the two pairs and the sets to continue, and obviously the straights. So, there's, it really doesn't make a difference if you're betting bigger or smaller, so in that case, you might as well go smaller, so it gets your bluff a lot cheaper. Um, you know, allows you to bet those hands like eights and nines, where they're just gonna call with the two pairs, and to get to showdown a lot cheaper. So, just a lot of reasons to bet smaller here, um, and in this case, we're gonna go ahead and check. River is the ten of clubs, and the villain bets two thousand into three thousand. And as you could see on the note, that villain is straightforward player, um, so go ahead and keep that in mind when you're making your decision.
Let's go.
Faraz is a wimp.
Let's go.
Um, the one interesting thing he said was, um, betting smaller for all the reasons why I wanted to bet big, and that we were only getting those things to. Continue, which was kind of my goal, um, you know what I mean? Um, and I feel like in some of these smaller buy-ins, maybe not the eleven hundred live, and that's debatable. But in some of these smaller buy-ins, particularly online, like the five is just gonna float you so much when you go small, you know what I mean?
But that's, I mean, but at the same time, like, uh, I think those hands are gonna have a hard time, it's gonna be, it's gonna put them in a tough spot. Knowing they have to call a turn bet and a river bet, uh, with just like, king five or something like that, I, I don't know if they're gonna float you twice, man.
Well, they're not gonna float me twice when I bet bigger either, right? Float me once, and then I'm on a river where, now I don't know if I'm getting floated with the nuts or floated with some bullshit.
Yeah, but we're getting, we're condensing ranges, and we're risking more than we have to, right, like, that five should. A single pair of five, weak five, should be such a small part of his range, it should be folding to double barrels, whereas when we go big, we just start condensing. I don't know, I mean, I, I kind of agree with him, I would never go big on this turn as a bluff, like, I'm just not, like, versus big blind range, it's not happening. For me, for me at least, I think we get a lot of the same information for cheap, and, um, yeah, I don't know.
That's interesting.
I would always track it, I would never bet this spot, like, for me, but I get it, like, some combos, like having an eight makes a lot of sense, so.
That eight makes a lot of sense, cuz then you block six, eight, and things like that, right?
Yeah, yeah, I like that a lot, that he said, we, we can, we wanna use that as a bet, I do like that.
Tom Price says, eight, seven clubs, we're using the flop, eight, three clubs, NRG is shipping, Rad Dad shipping. Bet almost freezes, just, just call, says Cyrus.
Men, we have to call, at minimum, we have to call.
Call, what, don't leave what, eat the cat call, jam, everybody table six, says Marlin.
Same five dollar buy-in as opposed to a five.
I mean, you guys who are betting are obviously betting for value, to get called by what that's worse?
All in, ripperoo, alright, we got some rips in here, some all ins, uh. Is anyone just calling?
I am.
I'm, I'm gonna tell you this now, like, the way he, uh, the way he ended that is makes me feel like. The straightforward player is just never gonna be out of line and call off with worse, is what I'm kinda.
Worse is calling, that was my first question.
Like, that, that's, I'm kinda getting, I'm kinda thinking like in a one K, a one K like this, he's probably not gonna get.
Tom says eight, seven off calls, I mean, why would eight, seven off call on a four liner straight three club board, like?
A six is never calling, when the, when the clubs get there.
A six is the one thing that may or may not call, right? It sucks, but like, they're like, I got the straight, like, I can see people just calling straight, oh, the flush beat me again.
A straightforward player, he didn't say bad, a straightforward guy, nah, I don't think he's calling.
I mean, you just see it a lot, so like, a six is definitely callable, but other than that, like. Two pairs gotta go, set's got a tough spot. Six, eight of clubs makes sense, sure, there's one hand, Marlon, but we gotta think about the range, right, like, six, eight of clubs. Six, four of clubs, two, six of clubs, eight. X of club, it's with clubs, right, like, it's just not that many. Not that many at all.
Yeah, I mean, I almost wanna just call here in the one K, like, if this was live and I had, I don't know, I feel like we just don't get called by too many worse hands.
Pair and nines, I mean, it's a four liner board again, Tom, like, four liner straight, three flush board, and you're gonna call with an underpair?
Eight, six of clubs, somebody's saying, uh, everybody's going with this, it seems like. Men click that shit back, ship says, I like that the men click the shit back.
Click it back.
Just clicked it. At this stack.
Just a little, just a little refuck you.
Yeah, a little ref, four K, like, what the fuck? Just shove, lady killer says.
Straightforward guy has a straight, obviously, so shove, but he could also have a flush. And like. Well, a straight is turning their hand, I mean, they're betting for value, I guess, are they betting for value?
Fallon says she would three X, I mean, we might as well just shove, we're gonna leave ourselves eleven fifty back? Do you think that makes a difference to some people when we do that? Might even look stronger, right? Alright, so, yeah, um, god, I don't know, I would just, I, 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 I'm, I feel like being a nit versus a straightforward nit.
Me too.
I mean, he, is he really gonna call off that much worse that often, whereas he can still have his beats, small percentage of the time? Are we ever bluffing here? No, we're never bluffing when we shove, I mean, yeah, we're just never bluffing.
Never bluffing.
We're never bluffing, so when he sees that, uh, you know, four, eight of clubs is folding. I think a small flush would fold here to us.
I don't think so, not in this game, but like, that's the one thing, like, we lose value from a small flush, and that's it, like, everything else.
You ever played live poker in a one K? Some of these guys, man, they're fucking insane.
Yeah, I mean, I played in the seventeen hundred main.
Some of, yeah, I know, I'm kidding, I know, some of these guys, some of them spew, some of them are insanely nitty in this spot.
Well, I'm talking about nits, like, not nits, but just nuts, like, you know, it was the eleven dollar ten K every day on any site you can play on. Uh, that was seventeen hundred fucking W S P circuit.
Alright, let's do it.
I'm calling.
I'm a go, you're calling, I'm going with the call, I wanna go all in, but. I feel like we, I feel like Faraz, I'm, I'm trying to learn Faraz's cadence as well, and it feels like, it feels like he wanted us to just, he was leaning towards just calling. Uh, the way he ended that, man.
I mean, I'm not even just trying to get the score, I'm just thinking, like, I don't beat shit. If he's a fish. I'm not getting called by, I can't think of much that I'm getting called worse.
Yeah, this is definitely opponent slash game dependent, good morning Melissa, good to see you. Um, Drenny, we got second last night for fourteen hundred, almost fifteen hundred, in that, alright, let's do it.
So, here, this decision actually isn't as straightforward as you might think. I can definitely go with calling or jamming all in here. And I'd say typically, the standard play is to go all in here. Um, you're gonna get people, you know, betting their sixes, and being pretty tempted to call off when you jam here. Especially if they have a club in their hand, blocking the flush, um, you know, they might be paranoid that you're just taking a hand like the ace of clubs. Or king of clubs, and turning it into a bluff, so people will get pretty tempted. Um, that said, because this is a very straightforward player, I think what you end up seeing is. Straightforward players will go smaller here with a six in their hand, that's kind of a block bet. And a bet larger, uh, when they have a flush, because they know they might be able to get called by a straight. Um, so because of that, I would actually be a little scared, uh, from the sizing. Uh, it's kind of in between, but it's, it's definitely not small, and also against a straightforward player, they might be a little less likely. To call with just a straight once the flush hits, um, that, that part is questionable, um, you know, they're still gonna be tempted to call, but. Uh, I, I think I want to have a higher flush here to jam versus this type of player. So, I'm gonna go ahead and call here this time because of the info we have on the player. But again, you know, keep in mind versus a more standard player, a more GTO player, uh, we definitely wanna shove here, otherwise we're gonna be missing value. So, again, we're, you know, taking exploitative lines because of the information we have on the player.
That's it, you called him, make him show, make him show Faraz.
Right, don't leave this.
You called him.
Make him show his hand and tell me what he has.
What is this, an ACR replay? What's going on here?
Oh, piss, wanted to see that, man.
Uh, we're missing value without jamming, we are not missing value without jamming, Marlon, we talked about how we can't think of anything worse, it's calling. Uh, one issue I have with the range advantage is that. When the button, RFI's got fifty percent of hands in his range, meaning that we can rep a lot more, and the problem is on the turn, I got a zero by betting two thirds on the turn. I can have every six, every set, every six, eight, yeah, well, we gotta talk about that too, I mean, I bet big on the turn too, because I like to make them have a six. Um, but the argument is that they have a lot of six X and two pairs in their range as well. And so, the big bet just doesn't get as many folds, I mean, that's why we have the goose egg up there too.
Alright, damn, that sucks that we don't get to see his hand, but I think he's pretty much got a. Alright, damn, that sucks that we don't get to see his hand, but I think he's pretty much got a perfect score. I mean, the pre, the fir- the pre flop decision is. Moot between four and five hundred. We fully acknowledge that live, you just can go five hundred a lot in that spot, but I'm still gonna go four hundred or two point two. So that's good quiz, good quiz.
I mean, we did good, I mean, the five is deceptive because we went. A little smaller and I do think that's moot as well. And then the seven on the turn, I think is, you know, a different line we could take. Cool, the goose egg is a little rough.
You got a goose egg?
Yeah, it was zero for the big bet. Me, ship, and I think it was Rad Dad in the chat, all got goose egg.
Oh, that's funny as hell.
You in that one? I gotta follow, but I didn't see it was. Trying to check that out.
What was, what was your, uh, what was your last, uh, what was your score for that?
Uh, it wasn't great, uh, twenty two.
Alright, cool. You got a twenty two, guys.
Cause we got goose egg.
Yeah, somebody was asking in my chat. Um, do you see one?
You can, uh, for those asking in the chat, do your exclamation point multi, they can watch both at the same time.
Oh shit, I need to set that up, mine as well, fuck.
Um, Storm Goddess, uh, Storm Godessa, thank you for, or Godess AA? Storm Goddess AA, I think that's what it is. Thank you for the phone.
Alright, let's do this, pick one, boy.
What? Uh, I'm not ready, uh, making my shit together. Get to the lobby.
There you go. You can multi without being part, yeah, we can multi Twitch, uh, yeah, people can watch both of our streams at the same time. Let me put the link in there.
Oh, somebody put the link in there?
Uh, I said, I'll, I'll throw the link in my chat if you wanna watch both of the streams at the same time. I got you, I got you. Here it is, guys. There's the multi stream, both, both chats, if you wanna just pull up, support both streams, we appreciate it.
Uh, while you're doing that, I'm gonna pick one, it's gonna be, you know what I noticed? There hasn't been a lot of new Jonathan Little ones. Shit in the UK too, right? Like.
Oh, you know, he's gonna come out and shotgun a bunch out there, I can't wait.
Um, alright, let's do everything for Matt's in the main, huh? What about the new one, seven sixty six?
Seven sixty six, ten K main event. Uh, ran, yeah, let's do it. Uh, we get put in the spot right away. What do you guys like here? King nine of diamonds. LoJack open, we're all deep as fuck, king nine, what are we doing? Hey, teaching, thank you, I will enjoy, thank you for stopping by, appreciate it, hope you had a good session. Lady Killer says fold. BQ says seven K.
Cyrus is flat, Bruce is calling, composition says Rad Dad. Three bet to seven K for Matt.
Man, three bets is flat. Snap fold, trade kit, says seven K. Frosty's folding, ooh, we got all kinda shit in here. We got a flat, a three bet, snap fold. Ship ain't folding.
Yeah, three bet is the playing position versus rec. Three bets is stood, calls is on C, uh, we are super deep here, so I am going to three bet this, I think.
I'm three betting as well.
Ooh, my man, I think I'm going seven K.
Yep. Flat, I mean, three, uh, I might like flattening this duty king a little bit more on the button, um. Then I do here. We have no information on opponents behind, which leads me to believe we're not gonna be put in tough spots a lot. Uh, he's not saying anyone's aggressive, so we don't have to worry about anyone squeezing. Uh, at a high frequency or anything like that. So if you do flat, that's probably gonna be close. Um, I'm just gonna prefer to three bet. Um, I think we're gonna win the pot and have more EV three betting this hand and flating. I'm not worried about four betting, cause if he four bets, we just snap fold. Like, I'm I'm not crying about losing. Having to fold, you know, king nine suited to a four bet, don't care.
Pat says, I guess prefer to three bet, uh, to fall out the blinds and get heads up, yeah, and this is the thing, when we're super deep. We wanna be three betting these hands more often and then just folding the offsuit ones. And as we get more shallow, we wanna three bet the offsuit ones and three bet fold and then flat the suited ones, so we can find equity and go with it, basically.
Yeah, somebody just made a good point, three bet to isolate the recreational player. Who's probably gonna play pretty poor post flop, who's gonna play poor to our three bets. Uh, who's gonna play port on future streets and getting heads up in position versus a player like this is probably going to be the best, right? Um, we're deep, so yeah, I I definitely like three betting more than playing a multi-way pot. Uh, potentially what, fucking five ways with king nine of diamonds? That was three bet and we'll have, you know, initiative. Um, so did, I I like, I like all that.
Thomas says three behind act is terrible, three bet with that hand, ask if you dominated, the prob- the good thing about three betting this hand, Tom, is the. We get like the king ten, the king jack, that shit all folds. With a raise and a three bet, all that stuff's folding pretty, so.
Yeah, some of these hands, you know, you shouldn't be flattening a lot of three bets out of position, so when they start overflating here, we punish them. Um, you know, especially with hands that should be dominated in their range, you shouldn't be calling a raise with. A three bet with king ten offsuit and shit like that, you know, so.
I mean, even king queen with a raise and a three bet, probably a fold.
Yeah, so yeah, I'm a three bet here and uh, hopefully, I mean, hopefully, let's see what Matt does.
I'm gonna do two.
Let's do it.
Uh, king diamond ni- king nine of diamonds here is pretty much a tier three bet hand for me, cutoff versus LoJack. Uh, the reason I like three betting this hand is as really good equity when it's called, we have two overcards to a lot of the small pocket pairs and suited connectors they call with. Uh, we have some blockers with the king, uh, we're suited and a couple of good things happen, getting the fold hands like king jack off, king queen off. Ace nine off, um, that dominate us, so we get a pulled out hands that dominate us right away pre flop, which is. Really good and we get a play in position with a pretty strong hand when he does call, so. I really like three betting this hand, calling's fine, folding is fine, if you're on the tiger side, I don't mind folding either, but. To me, I pretty much always three bet this hand. Three three that's seven thousand, three and a half X is pretty much my standard. And he calls, the fuck comes queen ten nine? He checks, should we check? Bet six thousand, bet ten thousand, or bet fourteen thousand?
There we go. Tom says, uh, I wish you guys don't play ACR. Tom was saying, uh, when talking about the three bet, he said, I guess you guys don't play on ACR. And I said, yeah, we do play on ACR, I play every day up to the one or nines and I realize you were kidding, but yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just good poker, right? Just good poker. Sorry, I don't know if that came across in the chat, it's like. I wasn't, um. Yeah, I know, we do have to get the volume resolved, um, this time it's my fault.
Somebody just said fold here.
So a hundred people have asked, is even on the charts as a caller, it's three bet, to three bet this, gives about forty four more. We have a bluff combo, it's not my style, fine if those. So Cap, if you don't three bet this, then I think folding is an okay option in general, in a vacuum. You're trying to isolate and get heads up with a rec player, go ahead and three bet it, um, or get, you know, something like that, but if you, I think folding is an okay option.
Absolutely. It's okay, I mean, if you're not comfortable using hands like this as three bets. Or, you know, you really don't have this in your range, uh, and you're not comfortable, fold. It's, it's, it's okay, you're not like, it's okay to fold this.
The big thing about this one is just don't flat. Don't flat out, uh, don't flap with this guy having initiative and then getting weird spots and check fold a lot to a lot of C bets, basically.
I know what I'm, I know what I'm doing here, but I wanna see what chat says, cause it seems like, uh, people are doing some different things than I'm doing.
Uh, one more says that, don't flag your ass and gets closed in, agreed. Says I checked back with two broadways on this board, hits a three bet flattening range pretty hard. Plenty of act, we don't realize, good shot, the backdoor flush draw. Um, fold was a seven, oh, nice cap, see, so folding a very good option. Um, machine is spending ten K here, he's going huge. Tom Price going ten K as well. Since we went this way, Marlon's firing six K, Ginger's firing six K, Savage is in the army today, sixes, what's up?
I know, I, it's the toe army, the toe army's always fueled up, dude, I love it. Alright, what we doing, sixes mafia? We got six K, trace is C bet. Um, if we flat with king nine suited, we could be in a five-way pot deep stacks and we could wreck them. True, but we're going to, it's gonna be probably higher EV to three bet. Uh, player who's gonna play poorly post flop in some situations and then have them overfold to C bets. Um, is, is, I think it's just gonna be better for me to get a heads up and. Bet and rake the pot, so we're seeing a lot of six Ks, I see some ten K. Yeah, so for me here, um, personally, I'm just gonna go six K, let's think about the range, she still continues with some of. Under pairs, right? Those under pairs are gonna fold to any bet, the ace highs are gonna fold, uh, to a lot of bets as well. We still will get folded with like ace, jack and things like that, um. But yeah, I think his range that continues is almost gonna continue to a large bet or a small bet, but I wanna give myself a good price to. You know, be able to barrel turns, um. And that, if he's gonna, if he's gonna have a queen or a ten, he's just gonna continue no matter what size we make it. Um, so I'm gonna use a small size, fold out a lot of this range and still be able to have equity for future streets and position. So I'm going six.
Is where we part ways, my friend.
You're gonna go big right here?
So small, it's gonna be checked. So if I can three bet pop with two cards over a nine, this smacks this three bet calling range, no, 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 no.
We're blocking king queen, um, blocking some king tens, we got some backdoor equity. Um, I'm gonna be able to use this hand as a double barrel.
Three bet, bet, bet on a gutter with an over that's probably not good, like whoa.
Yeah, I know, I, I just, I feel like I wanna bet here, I feel like I don't wanna check, uh. A gut shot and over, we have king high, we're not gonna be able to show it down. I do get that we will be able to go bet, bet if he does check. Like, if he checks turn, we're just going bat bat, you know, um, a lot. And I think that's kind of appealing, but uh, I would tend to wanna bet here and alley you bid on some turns and then just give up.
Snap check, snap call, turn with a decent bet size with an over.
I mean, we're blocking just some king queens and things like that. I know he still has some ace queens and queen jack and stuff like that. He may still have in his range, queen jack of hearts and, you know, ace ten.
Just a lot of stuff that's just gonna continue, like, I don't feel like the C bet here is gonna work very much.
All the under pairs are folding.
Sure.
Um, and I know what you're saying, those hands aren't gonna bet turn, so we can delay C bet and still get a lot of those same hands to fold, right?
He checks to me twice, I'm going bat bat for sure, I'm gonna alley.
I know, I know, I know. Um, I've in a three bet pot, I don't think I would ever check aces here. I would never check kings here, I would never check ace queen here, so I'm going to. I keep my range uncapped and keep all the strongest hands in my range and use this as a bet as well. Cause I'm not gonna be able to show it down, so if I'm betting aces here, I'm gonna bet this king nine as well.
Okay, this is where we part ways and I'll see you on the other side.
I'll see you, my dude. It's been good knowing you. If I get one point, I'm ending your stream. Alright, let's do it.
Um, this is just kind of the dream spot to C bet with king nine of diamonds. By betting here, we're gonna fold all the suited aces that brick, like ace, five, six, seven, eight, nine suited. Ace DC three suited, we're giving the full pocket five, six, seven, eight to nine. Um, and we have an immediate gut shot to a jack and an overcard and a backdoor flush draw, pretty much the dream C bet spot. I like betting six thousand, about forty percent of the pot, betting ten thousand is fine too. Don't think we need to go that much larger, we're just attacking the range that I mentioned above and then we'll pretty much barrel this hand on any brick. Um, for at least once, possibly barrel the river as well. We have pocket queens, pocket tens, ace queen. Kings and aces that are all gonna be willing to play. We have queen ten suited sometimes that we three bet well. As well, so we have plenty of hands that wanna play for three streets here and this is a really good hand to start bluffing with. So we do bet six thousand and he folds right away. This hand is just a great example of body, fighting for pots that, you know, didn't belong to you. And this is how you win tournaments is fighting for these pots that, you know, don't belong to you and winning these extra pots that people aren't winning.
Marty, thank you for the follow. Yeah, I mean.
Let's go, boy.
Disagree, but.
Everything, he just said everything that I said. If we chat, we don't have aces, kings. We don't have like the top of our range anymore, so let's fucking bet.
I'm still checking back some queen X.
Shit, not I said to Cat, I want equity in that spot for.
I actually disagree on this one, but that's okay. We got six points for the, uh, for the check, wasn't. Wasn't good, wasn't terrible, wasn't terrible, wasn't, wasn't great.
Yeah, um, but yeah, Matt was out there, I love it, he was, that was good, that was good. Tom Price says everything. Totally agree, check it back, the, yeah, so you got, I mean, there's a couple people that also agree with checking it back in my, my chat as well, so.
It's a good debate spot, it's a good quiz.
Yeah, it was, it was, I agree.
Turned into it, no, I mean, not at all. Just these weird awkward spots, I don't blow pots in these weird awkward spots where. You know, just in general, quizzes in general, you know what I mean, like, I'm gonna wait till you show a sign of weakness. And then I'm, I'm double barreling, turning river, and I'm gonna make it fucking hurt, uh, if he checks twice, you know what I mean? And if he bets like quarter pot, half pot, I'm just gonna call my gutter and my over and pick up a diamond and just get to call my gutter, my over, my diamond draw, just. Nice and simple, nice and simple. I mean, you guys watch my stream, I'm not scared to. You know, I just. Choose to do a little more information. I, I think when we bet here, we don't get any information.
We did, he folded and we got king high.
You got worse to fold, like.
Yes, we got better to fold, he might have had ace high, he might have had an under pair. I mean, we got a better hand to fold. I mean, he had ace high, how did he have much worse than that unless he folded queen?
I mean, it is, but it's also time dimension, right? Like, timing is key too. There's a fine line between genius and madness in this game. I'm not saying this is necessarily it, I'm just saying in general.
Alright, cool, uh, my turn. What do we want, boys? What looks good? Uh, let me make sure we hit. Uh, go back to see, so I can see the scores we got on other quizzes, make sure I don't pick a duplicate. I'm gonna get to depicting all the Faraz ones, did we do, did we, have we done? Oh, piss. Alright, uh. Who has good volume? Uh, you've been telling me that for weeks now, buddy, it's all, it's all up to, uh, when it works.
Thinking, I could probably do Monday.
Let's do younger Yarro.
Seven sixty two?
Yeah, let's do it.
You know what's funny? Is a lot of times Matt usually goes nitty on me and this time. He, he switched gears.
I don't know, it just seemed like a super standard C bet spot to me, I would take it at one hundred percent.
So funny that.
You know, we, we get in these.
Alright, let's play it.
Let's do it.
Alright, in this hand, we have the ace five of spades, I'm gonna go plus one, should we fold? Call, raise to two thousand.
Yeah, we do this for about two hours, guys, so maybe another hour or so, maybe half an hour, depends. I gotta go to the home and garden show. Buy some tools.
I gotta, you know, I gotta spend time with my toe before I hit the road. Uh, but anyways, uh, you'll probably get like two, maybe three quizzes more in.
Something like that.
Uh, hundred bigs deep, cool, just checking out the sizes here.
You already know what we're gonna do here.
Two point two K, so Pat Moore going off the charts there. Why not two point five X? Um, Cat, uh, I don't wanna give away an answer. Brain Mount Time, no, this is, oh, we can do that next, Marlon. There's a twenty-three year old with a Red Bull.
Yeah, we can check that out.
Full table, Cap's going three K, Machine's going two K. Eats going three K. Beats going two K.
Alright, so you got a bunch of two Ks, yeah, I mean. Yeah, my, I see a couple twos, Tom, somebody's folding.
Never folding.
Ace five suited, hell no, you wanna fold ace deuce and even ace three, cause they make less straights than ace four and ace five, sure. But we ain't pulling no ace five, son. Not, not around these parts. Um, I think.
My favorite, like shitty hand.
Ace five suited?
Jack ten suited, they're my favorite, like mediocre hands.
Yeah, they play so well, we can use it as a four bet sometimes.
Every time I see it, I'm like, wow, there's a four bet pop, but I love this.
I would go two K in game, uh, but in the context of a one K. Or what, what tournament is this? A ten K main event when everybody's a hundred big lines deep, I think Matt's gonna wanna go three X. I think Matt's gonna wanna go three X.
Yeah, I mean, this is one of those things when we're a hundred blind deep, we're supposed to be going bigger. We're supposed to be going three X and then as. The blinds go up and chips become more valuable, then we go min raise to, you know, get things done cheaper. It just works more. You know, stacks are more awkward here. Min raising, you're gonna be called five ways.
I mean, but to be fair, like, we shouldn't spend too much time on this decision point because. We're just never folding, we're never limping and it's an option between two sizes. Where everyone's probably going in, in the middle or something like that. So, man, you know, wait, wait a minute, one second. Alright, cool. So I'm gonna go, I would always go two X here, uh, if I, between the two options, but you know, it doesn't really matter.
I'm always going min raise live. I'm probably going twenty to twenty-three hundred. Given these options, I'm gonna go three K.
Alright, let's do it.
Uh, this hand is a pure raise, spot of spades. Um, I think people are way too tight in early position. They should be opening up hands like these. Um, you win tournaments by getting in there and stealing the blinds and the annies and playing pots, not just by sitting back and waiting for premium hands. Um, and so I think you need to get in there and be battling with this hand and, uh, raising it at all times at a hundred big blinds deep. When you get shorter stack, twenty, thirty big blinds, maybe you're not raising this hand all the time, but at these deep stacks, this is a very good hand. So we do raise to two thousand, two thousand's fine, three thousand's fine. I prefer the min raise. Uh, this younger Euro, three bets me to six K. This is like an hour, a couple hours into the day. He hasn't three bet me yet. Um, I would assume he's competent. And it folds back to me. Should we fold, call, re-raise to sixteen thousand or go all in?
Yeah, well, it wasn't about betting because of our hand strength. We're going bigger. We're going bigger because everyone's so deep and min raises aren't as effective.
Alright, boys.
So yeah, three K was eight, so not a big deal.
Who says fold? Hey, Tom, don't you be dare be talking trash about my man Matty Affleck. He would destroy you. He would fucking destroy you, son.
He's my neighbor.
Watch your mouth. He's been in the game since you were a glimmer in your daddy's eye. Come on, huh? If you're a young Euro on our left, we fold aces pre, yeah. Uh, I know, I kinda feel like I know what I'm doing here, but I, I have.
Ah, it's a sticky one. Like, I feel like I should fold, but I love this hand and we're on a position.
I am never folding.
Uh, Pat Moore's folding, kept calling, JB Good is folding, Joe's calling. Ginger's calling. Uh, Pat Moore says we're deep, but how good do we feel when we hit top pair? Uh, not, I'm gonna check it and have some top pair in my check back range with a shit kicker. Easy peasy. Think it went small because it's the main with two hour levels. Eh, maybe. Uh, calls raised strong for three bet, I'm sorry, position razor. I actually think, uh, that is a reason for folding. Already folded pre-flop, Tom's not even in the hand. You're strong range, you have good implied odds. Folding isn't nonsense. Here I'll probably play a marginal hand out of position, so I think it depends on the players, the act of, uh, heroes. Yeah, yeah. So I, I mean, I think I'm folding. We raise another position. This guy's three betting us in early position. Razor, like, this is all bad things.
Yeah, for me, um, let's see what the chat is saying real quick. We got a couple of calls. Uh, someone makes a point I like, uh, what did they say? Ace five suited is a good spot to four bet out of position versus a euro. I'm, I'm making it sixteen for sure.
I mean.
I'm making this shit sixteen for sure.
It is strong as hell.
I'm making this shit fourteen all day, uh, sixteen all day.
I can see that option. I need, I don't, like, I'm never doing that in, in game, but I can definitely see the merit. I mean, I, I, let me, let me clarify. Like, I would do that more if I was in the hijacker, the cutoff versus the button or the blind raise. More than I would here under the gun one versus a under the gun, I'm sorry, under the gun two versus an under the gun three.
Well, one thing that jumps out as me, at me is, uh, I think his sizing should be a bit bigger at a hundred big blinds deep to be three betting in these positions. I, I would like to see maybe him going four X, four point two five X. When he goes six X, um, we're getting a better price to just four bet bluff here. And our hand plays well when he does call, he snap jams. Who gives a shit? I just throw my hand in the muck and have a good stack. Um, if he does call, you know, I'm still gonna be able to just C bet and take it down at some percentage, but yeah, uh, we can flop nuts. Check rate, we can flop nut, flush draws and check raise. I'm definitely making it sixteen. I like it.
Yeah, so Pat Moore says four betting interesting, actually, did read the player type. Yeah, I, I do think it's interesting. Um, I definitely think it's interesting. Uh, there was something else in there then.
And we do, I mean, if you were to look at.
Oh, Tom says, what can you flop that is good for you? I don't care about flopping what's good for me. I think it was like king four.
Fucking nuts.
If it's king four eight, I'm just gonna C bet, like.
You can flop the steel wheel. What do you mean?
You know what I mean? Like, I'm just gonna win it cause I have aggression. So I'm not worried about like, if I hit the board, I'll deal with it, but if I don't hit the board, I'll, you know what I mean? Like, I'm just gonna play post, basically.
Yeah, this is just an optimal four bet bluff spot and I'm gonna.
Yeah.
Somebody said all in. Hell no, just sixteen K.
I mean, I am definitely folding in game, but I can, I think sixteen K is kinda sexy.
So you're gonna go with fold and I'm gonna go with sixteen. I'm, I'm, I'm feeling very good about this one. I mean, I don't know if I'm gonna get a ten here. But I would, if I, if I seen this spot in game, it would feel so.
Look like he's pointing like Babe Ruth. He's about to knock that shit out of the park.
I've got, I haven't got.
Good. He's winning quizzes, guys getting silvers. You motherfuckers better be careful on the va, Nevada streets today.
I'm not playing today, I mean.
For jugulars. Uh, alright, uh, I mean, I, I probably folding, but again, like, I, I think sixteen K is a little sexy.
Alright, sixteen K it is. Let's do it, boy.
I do think it's sexy. I think a goose egg is a pretty strong. With sixteen K.
Consider folding this hand, but at this size, I think we need to be continuing with ace five of spades. And, uh, I think I like four betting actually. This is one of our better hands to four bet with. Um, if I ever think this player's getting out of line, if I don't ever think he's getting out of line, calling becomes a much better option. But, um, re-raise into sixteen thousand or calling are both very good options here. Uh, I choose to call this time and it comes queen ten four rainbow. We're always gonna check to the pre-buff aggressor. Ten of diamonds on the turn. Should we check? Bet five K, bet ten K or bet fifteen K?
He didn't do it. I thought he was, I thought he did it. He didn't make it sixteen. He just called.
Yeah, he said he likes sixteen K and in game he just called. Um, the one thing I agree with, like I said, sixteen K is super sexy, no doubt. I totally can see it. But the one thing I disagree is like folding was a goose egg. Like, that's a little strong.
Dude, we can't fold. I mean, you're not folding.
Three X three bet early position.
Cause it's too small. He made a mistake with his sizing and he needs to be punished for his sins. I mean, you can't just go three six. Dude, I mean, I am never folding if somebody makes it, it's too small and a hundred big blinds deep. Like, who gives a shit if we lose? A few big blinds. We're still gonna have a lot of utility and we're gonna stack him sometimes, cause he gave us too good of a price.
My argument is that he barely gave you a good enough price and, uh, his range is super strong in both.
Not really. Not when he makes a mistake like that. Three X is too small.
Um, Tom says when you called, you're hammered again. Like, you gotta, you're only assuming he's got aces and kings and queens. If he doesn't have that kinda stuff, we can get him to fold better hands. Not just trying to hit the flop. You, you, I think you're stuck playing your cards, it sounds like, and not the scenario a little too much in general.
And you gotta remember, if they have eight, if they have kings and queens and jacks and shit they three bet you with, you can get there. You can bury a motherfucker all day, you know? You can flop a flush draw, uh, parent. Good things can hap, you're allowed to like pick up good hands. You're allowed to suck out on kings and shit, you know?
And you can get better to fold. Ace, king calls you, misses the flop, you C bet, put him in a weird spot, they fold a decent amount of flops, right? You get better to fold.
Yeah.
Um, C bet, get like under pairs. In this scenario, I'm a hundred percent bet.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We check back. He never has a queen.
I mean, he, he did cap his range to some extent. We can make hand, why wouldn't ace, king C bet? So he's gonna three bet you with like eights or nines? Yeah. He's gonna have like eights or nines and then we just bet small here and bomb river. Yeah, so BQ to kind of revise what happened in this situation, uh, we opened min raise, under the gun, plus one. Uh, yeah, under the gun, plus one with ace five, this young Euro plus two, three bets, uh, three X to six K. Folds around, we call, uh, flop goes check, check, and here we are on a turn deciding if we should turn our ace high into a bluff to make under pairs. Or a better ace high bolt. And if we are gonna do that, we gotta figure out what sizing we wanna use. Do we wanna go small here and then alley oop? Or do we wanna use, uh, a very big bet here, condense and then just give up? I mean, if I go fifteen K and he calls, like, what the fuck? We just, I don't know if it's gonna be very hard to double barrel.
So if we go all five. Bet when the middle card pairs and he checks the turn, I think it's a hundred percent bet. Like, I think it's just.
I mean.
He says pile this hand. I wish we could. We don't have time, because pile sims take a lot of run. Um, I wish we could.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I mean, we don't have any equity to fucking like, other than the ace that we could be at best. I'm just checking. I, I. I'm gonna get my first wrong answer here, but I'm gonna do what I would do in game. I mean, I don't, how are we gonna take the lead out of position? I guess we.
Because he checked flop and we have all the queens and all the tens and he's got none of them.
Think he ever balances his range.
I think he balances it somewhat, but.
We're not gonna make jacks fold. Jacks are not folding to this bet.
No, but they're gonna fold when I go bat bat.
Alright, what do you guys think, chat? I'm gonna have to go to chat. I've got a perfect score all day. I've only got one wrong all day and it was a four. It was a pre-flop spot between going four and five hundred and now in this spot, um, I'm just. Alright, uh, let's see. We have all the queens. Yeah, we do have some queens.
We have all the queens and we have all the tens.
These Euro regs, three bet, tons of suited tens. Check, check here, check this flop. I'm a nit, I check. We're getting a lot of checks. Check. Alan, uh, what you doing, shit? What did you say? If we check, we lose. So it sounds like. Shit, yeah, if we check, we lose. Eat the cats at ten K, GBT, there are tons of tens that three bet. Yeah, it seems impossible for us to win the hand. I mean, shit.
It's pretty standard to bet when the second pair turns, when the second card on the flop.
Well, I mean.
It's pretty standard. Even if it's a bluff, like, if you have ace, king, you should bet there.
Like, I think it comes down when range advantage changes. Um, I guess we have some nine, tens in our range that we would call a three bet with. We have some king, ten suited, cause he fucked up his sizing. Um, hold on.
Uh, Pat says, I don't think he checked jacks on the flop. I think a hundred percent jacks on the flop. I'm a hundred percent checking jacks on this flop for sure myself. Uh, younger, you're progressive in general, so put the pressure right back on him. Bet five K, check to evaluate, check call river. The problem is, is that. If we check call river with ace high, geez. Coach Gabe being silly. As I discussed here on two Broadway boards, definitely smacks your three betting flagging range. Yep. And then when we check to the aggressor, so we have all the queens and all the tens.
Alright, I'm checking. I, I give up. Do you go ahead? You do you. Uh, I, I'm just, I'm not confident needing to bluff off twice with ace five high after calling and. When I think they could have just some, he showed weakness on one street where he could just have queens. Uh, he should be betting everything this deep though, which kinda makes me a little sick because he just has jacks here. Or nines or eights and we can make those folds. Fuck. Alright, I'm checking. Cut still. Alright.
Um, we have better hands to bluff with. We're gonna have like the king, jack suited, the ace, jack suited. We're gonna have, uh, just hands with more equity in them. Nine eight suited, uh, jack nine suited potentially. So having an ace high hand isn't very good either, because we block the hands that he's gonna fold, like the ace. Five, three, do suited, that he might have three bet pre-flop that we could get to fold now. Um, I'd just much rather start bluffing without an ace. We have a smidge of showdown value, just a little bit, but, um, yeah, I like checking. If we are gonna bet, I do like betting fifteen thousand. Cause we're gonna be pretty polar here. We're not betting like pocket sevens. I would just check pocket sevens again. Uh, we wanna be betting really big if we're gonna bet here. We do check and he checks back. The river is the eight of spades. Same options. Should we check? Bet five K, bet fifteen K or bet twenty-five K?
It's funny, cause I always said Matt goes nitty on me. Sometimes I definitely think this is one of those spots where I already disagree.
He just made some every ballot, every, every ballot point. I mean, we're blocking.
Disagree. I think all those points are the reasons why I'm betting. Oh, hardly disagree. And I always said like, Matt usually goes nitty on me. He didn't go nitty on me last time, which is funny, but this is the exact spot where he goes nitty on me.
We're just gonna turn an ace high out of position to an early position.
Sevens, sixes, jacks.
Blocking his ace, jack.
Like, all that shit folds. Gonzo, bye-bye. And he checked twice, like, we knew he didn't hit this, like, when he checked back the turn. Not a surprise. We knew he was gonna check that back turn, cause when he checked back the flop, he never has a fucking hand. Take the put, take the pot. He was talking about having to fight for pots in order to win tournaments and then when we get the obvious fight spot, he checks. My ass.
Yeah, because, yeah, because, I mean, we're just repping too thin and we're not blocking. No, I, 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 I get you. I mean, I, I understand. I understand turning our hand into a bluff here because he will fold a lot of shit, like, I get it.
Disagree. Here it's an easy check. I mean, we can't just bet now. We're fucking repping. We're nothing. We got here in Nittsville nowhere. You guys are talking about me being in it, like, what the fuck? We're in Nittsville nowhere. Fuck this shit.
Uh, he's, and he's fired up today. He's tired.
Seriously, like, he fucking, you know why? The other thing too is like, you got a one. Like, that's a bullshit fucking one. Come on. That's a bullshit fucking one.
I don't know what you say. I see ones and zeros on mine, boy.
Bullshit.
I love it.
That motherfucker. I'm going to his house after this. Anyways.
Well, I mean, I don't see where we're repping now.
That's funny. Is check raise that bad? I mean, again, when we check raise web, what are we repping? What if we check all the way to the river? And then check raise here. It's literally only pocket eights that, that got a boat on the river, because otherwise we would've bet the turn with a ten for value. We would've bet a queen on the turn for value. Um, we probably check back something like jacks and nines. And then maybe we probably bet those on the river for value when it checks twice, right? So like, we have no value in a check raise situation here, except for pocket eights that had a boat on the river. So it's pretty paper thin, basically.
Just like a young man coming in for a koki. I feel so unsatisfied. I had to say, somebody put it in the chat. I'm sorry, guys. Lost control of my body. Uh, I'm jacking. Like, what are we repping? We're gonna be, we overbet and try to make.
Repping eight, ten, queen ten. No, no, no. See, the problem there, Wes, like, if we have queen ten, we need to bet, we need to get value for our full house. Why are we not betting the flop, betting the turn? Like, you wanna get value from king, jack, worst queens, other ten X, things like that. Like, you should, queen ten's definitely not out there. Ten eight, again, should a hundred percent be checking flop, betting turn and then they should be betting river again for value as well. So ten eight out, jack nine makes sense. And jack nine is, yeah, jack nine makes sense. I'll give you jack nine. We can't bet here. Just check, right?
Yeah, fuck it. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I guess we could find some, uh, reason to make us believe we can make him fold.
This motherfucker leads here, I'm shutting the stream off.
Alright, let's, let's check. Let's do it. I can't wait to see it.
Alright.
Here on the river again, I just like checking and giving up here.
I swear to God, I was hovering over the X. I was gonna kill the fucking stream. I swear to God.
Pocket fours or ace queen. So we're either gonna have a really strong hand here or bluff. Um, and I don't like using this size here with ace five suited. We could bet five thousand actually with some hands like pocket nines or sevens. Now to get some value from ace king. But, um, but yeah, this hand with the ace in it, uh, we have better hands to bluff with. We check, he checks back and he shows ace king and he's popped.
No. Tell, how you feel about that? Oh, man. Here, let me go back there.
I walked away.
He walked away. He's so.
I'm pacing, my ear. I wish I still smoked cigarettes.
Oh, that was good, dude.
The fuck? I got that hand gone. Fuck that hand.
You would win it. You would want that hand, yeah.
Fuck yeah, cuz he never had it. He never had it. He never checked. He should have bet the flop, first of all. But then he never fucking had it when he checked back the flop, like.
Yeah, we bet turn and river cuz if we bet turn, we have to turn our hand into a bluff on the river and we get ace king to fold all day.
Golly.
We make jacks and nines fold. I, I get what you're saying. I mean, we study together and we have to take these lines like, well, he caps his range on a flop. He either has fucking. Like queens top set or something very strong, otherwise he's just gonna have to fold.
And yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Get out of here. And, and what, what got me even more hyped up was the last fucking quiz, like gotta steal these pots to win tournaments, you mother.
Oh, he worked you.
Ah, you son of a bitch, Matt.
I love it.
That was fun.
Just to, uh, just to, just put this out there real quick. We've only got one score today under a ten. We got one five today.
We got some deuces and some ones, but like some of those were some harsh ass scores, like Jesus Christ. Some of them are some of them harsh ass score. But anyways.
Life heat, baby.
Shit. I didn't make so many podiums, that'd be mad. Sick brag, sick brag.
Yeah, you got, and then let's go.
Where you wanna go?
Uh, did I pick, did I pick that one? I think I picked that last one.
Did you?
Yep.
When are we staying away from Alex or are we?
We can play that, uh, Red Bull one. I mean, I think the volume was good last time.
Yeah, I mean, it is what it is. All my volumes were bad days, so.
Yeah. Alright, ship. Thanks for hanging out, buddy. Take care. Uh, AXFL starting today. That's kinda cool. I fuck with it. Um, six, you getting in those juicy eight? Yeah, I'm gonna play a shitload tomorrow. But, uh, yeah, let's play this. The one with the Red Bull for. Asasian Otto, I will not get a perfect score. It will not happen. It's not possible. He thinks so much different than me. I can't.
He never bet it either. He just.
Alright, you picked, did you pick one?
And one with ace high.
Uh-oh, he must have picked it.
Sorry, I did pick it. I'm sorry. Seven forty seven. I didn't, I didn't play it though.
Oh, seven forty seven.
I was, I had you on mute so I could rant.
It's all good.
Maybe I should help Matt in those spots. Machine gun Marlin in the house. Alright, man. Uh, seven forty seven, ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Let's do it.
Hey guys, we're gonna put you right back in another spot. A lot of people feel very uncomfortable in and they have a lot of questions about. So here you have a, you're in a one thousand dollar tournament in Vegas. You have ace two of spades on the button. Uh, a small blind, uh, another, uh, twenty-three year old kid drinking Red Bull. Uh, he's been very active three betting a lot. Uh, it's folded around you and also the big line, uh, here. He's, uh, he's been active. He's a little disheveled guy in his forties. Seems to. Know everybody at the casino and he, he's playing about thirty percent of the pots, but he's not super aggressive. So those are the two guys you're dealing with here. So pre-flop, would you like to hold, call? Raise to two fifty or raise to three hundred?
I'm sorry about the volume, guys. Uh.
It's really bad. Um, again.
Really bad. I apologize, man.
I don't know if we can fix it, but we, we gotta find time to try. Um, I'll make a real reminder to try and get it. Pick you up on Monday sometime. I'll be in your time, I'll even be in your time zone, so.
Oh, yeah, you can hear. I'll be around, um, Monday as well. We can fix it up then. Uh, how, somebody, how much is this package? Uh, month to have poker coaching? We, there's a premium membership, I believe it's a hundred a month.
Uh, there's a platinum membership that's a hundred bucks a month. There's a premium membership that's forty dollars a month. And then you can sign up for free as well and get twenty free quizzes, play blind charts for a hundred blinds plus and a bunch of other stuff.
Yep, and the staking opportunities as well. They've been staking for a lot.
And there's tons of other things besides these quizzes too, guys. There's homeworks where you start and you build yourself a range. And as the hand progresses, you're supposed to narrow your range, narrow your range, narrow your range and have a balanced amount of bluffs and calls. It's really good stuff. Tons of webinars, exclamation point PC in my chat, exclamation point PC in sixes chat. Let me get it out there for you. You get a nice little link to go check it out. Uh, so make sure you do that.
Yeah, uh, so. Let's see what everyone's doing. This is Alex Fitzgerald, the bot. Everything is way different than all the other quizzes we've done today. My man has his own style. He's going to play the player, play the situation. Um, and he's gonna use his reads and exploitative abilities to the max in some situations, so. It's always a little bit different. I got Flopzilla. I got all that shit. Poker stove. Yep, yep, yep.
Me too. Pio, ICM eyes are.
Yeah, we got it all.
I even got some weird stuff that I baited testing called kicker.
Yeah. Um, I'm gonna still go two fit. Uh, this is Alex, oh, piss. Yeah, I don't know. He always.
I mean, I honestly think it's again, it's a midpoint between two fifty and three hundred. It's a midpoint.
It, it really is like. Between these two sizes, let's not get too caught up.
I'm with you, but this is, I think, the same, right? Like the magic.
Yeah, it doesn't really matter to me. I'm just gonna click one of these. It doesn't really matter, like. To me at least. I mean, he might have a reason why we wanna use fifty chips more, but. If you're using either, either one of these sizes, it's not going to. The EB difference is so miniscule. Here, so let's just open. Smaller SPR for me. So I'm gonna go the smaller option.
Do Equilab and Flopzilla have, um, noticeable differences? I think. Flopzilla is a little easier to use, a little more user friendly with the interface, but in general, they're, they're pretty much the same.
No, no, Flopzilla has, uh, a lot more capabilities.
Details.
Because, yeah, a lot more details. Yeah, like, yeah, where, 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 where they're gonna fall in their range if they're gonna have ace highs and whatnot. The number, it helps you count the combos as well and everything. It's, it's much better. Um, but yeah, let's go ahead and just do this. Two pity idiots for me. Let's go.
Yeah, okay.
Alright.
You should still open, but probably the larger sizing is not going to dissuade this younger guy from. Three betting, so you should just make it two fifty. Uh, don't call. Uh, it's gonna cap your range and that's not gonna be good going post flop. So we make it two fifty and surprise, surprise, young guy, three bets and then the big line calls. Uh, doesn't think much about it. Now here, would you like to fold? Would you like to call? Would you like to raise to fourteen hundred or would you like to raise to three thousand?
Gets a little weird, guys. What are you doing out there? What are y'all doing?
Alright.
Now, this got a, a little weird.
It is. It really, it really is. Um. Guess in position. We gotta call four fifty to me. We're getting like four to one in position with the suited ace. Um, although. The three bet range could be wise. Do we squeeze this now and make it three K or do we just call? Anyone squeezing out there?
I mean, I'll give you this much. I was for sure.
I mean, that's squeezed, but, uh, four bet. I'm sorry, four bet.
I was a, for sure gonna four bet this without the big blind calling. Now I'm a little conflicted.
Three K, I'm more in. So you're gonna go three K, Dr. HJ? The two is a really bad card to have. Aztag, good morning, buddy. You say you're calling, man. Good to see you. Alright, alright, alright. I'd like to see the flop now, so we're calling. Yeah, we're seeing a lot of calls. Fallon's annoyed again. Okay, 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 okay.
Missing videos are how to use, he says hold a manager, PT four probably more wisely use the old manager, Echo Lab and Flopzilla. Um, I'm not the best guy to go super in-depth into those things, but just GTO definitely, Webb Miller's zero. Pope coaching guy. He's a wizard with that stuff. We can talk to him. Uh, forward to faults is Matt. Uh, wait, describe really wants me to format the three K says Cyrus. Composition, but Alex might do some cray cray. Four bets is a hundred and eight years later.
Four bet with the blockers and dead money. Ooh, make it three K. I, I swear, I kinda thought about that as well. Um.
I mean, it's three K or fold for sure.
You don't call getting four to one in position with the suited ace with a hundred big blinds? I'm not folding. He, once again, the same thing, th- this is, this is the issue. Here's, here's the issue with this toe.
Yep.
He fucked up his sizing again. How can we, I can't fold and like let him off the hook for making a mistake. Like he's under three X.
I agree.
Out of position, we're getting four to one. I'm not folding a suited ace, getting four to one in a position with a hundred big blinds. So. Um.
We were out of position last time, just saying.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, but he still made a, he still made a mistake and we had even a better ace that time. That's why I four bet that time.
We had ace five, we.
Yeah, that's why I four bet and then call. Yeah.
Uh. Yeah, I can look at it, it's.
You call the Buckeyes?
Call. We're getting crazy odds.
We're getting four to one.
This time definitely sizing error for sure. I agree with you.
Yeah.
Worse closing.
Alright, I'm calling. What you got? What you got? What you got toe?
I'm calling.
You wanted to fold. If he says fold, if Alex holds here, I'm gonna shit my pants right now.
Yeah, sizing error, I guess, is the difference though. It's, yeah. Not just the option.
Yep.
In this case, I don't believe a small four bet is a good idea because what's most likely gonna happen is both of these guys are gonna call you. Now, they'll be on the defensive, but that doesn't really help us that much because on average. Both of these guys are gonna miss the flop maybe a third of the time. So if we see that. Half pot, our bet needs to work a third of the time. So the bet's more or less a wash, right? So we're going to need to hit something in order to take this pot post flop, which is not a terrific. Spot to be in. Essentially what we buy. If we make it fourteen hundred here, which is not really a great purchase, is we buy the turn card. Cuz most likely they'll check to us and we can take the turn if we'd like. Uh, if you just said fold, okay, fine. Uh, if you said call, that's what pretty much everybody says. The, the problem being. We're going to need to hit something in a multi-way board. The option I like the most here is three thousand. Cuz you're risking twenty seven fifty here to win forty four hundred. And that means the bet's going to need to work. Well, let's just do it on the calculator. Twenty seven fifty here to win forty four hundred. That's gonna need to work sixty. We, we need everybody to fold here about sixty-three percent of the time. That is exceedingly likely when small blind is just going bonkers half the time and now. They, they have to decide for the tournament. This is a third of their chips, right? There's no real call a third of your chips and not be going for it. We, we discussed this guy, uh, was a little disheveled and wanted to be in like a third of the pots. This guy just three bets every time he. Wants. Most likely this is gonna work about seventy percent of the time. It's not, the guy pretty, they have to pretty much jam on us if they wanna do anything or. Pretty much commit for all their chips. They're not gonna do that. More than a third of the time. I think you have a great bet here, especially with the ace blocker. This is. One of very few four bet blocks I do and I do it because it is very effective.
I like that.
Yeah, I get down with that one hundred percent. I really like three K squeeze.
I like that. I like that. I just hate using the worst ace. Yeah, but at the same time, they're only gonna jam on you. It's not like, it's not like they're gonna be flattening out of position for a third of their stack. So it is literally. Just a block. Like, we're not, we're not about the two as having playability. We're playing it more as the ace being a blocker. And them needing to commit their whole stack.
And ours being a steel position and them reacting to a steel position, the flat, the big blind's weak, the three bet and the small blind. Is coming from, you know, an active guy against a steel position. It all makes sense.
Yep, yep. Um, I don't know how much more time I have, man. These quizzes have been going like twenty, twenty-five minutes to get through and. I gotta, I think we gotta, I gotta get out of here pretty soon.
No worries. Whoop my ass. It's my time to pay.
Yeah, today we got all perfect scores, but it's five and a six. So we got perfect scores through. We only got two wrong all day.
This one I agree with. Some of the scoring I disagree with and then some of the lines I disagree. I'm going down swinging. I disagree. But I'll take my loss on the chip. You beat me fair.
My son's a TI fan. I don't know why this is here, but TI, that's good.
Alright, cool. Uh, thanks for coming, guys. We'll be doing this, uh, next Saturday as well. Same time, same place, noon Eastern. And, uh, going over more of these quizzes. If you missed any of these or any of the ones we have done, this is our twentieth. Any of the ones that we've done in the past, we're all on the YouTube channel where you can review them, ask any questions you want. Like I always say, if you have any questions for sixes, I'll make sure to get some. We talk every day. And, uh, there you go. Make sure to hit the follow button for me, follow button for sixes. And, uh, exclamation point PC in my chat. Or, uh, sixes chat for links to get this content, so you can do more of it on your own there on piles. Thanks, man. It was fun.
Yeah, today was fun, man. Thank you, guys, uh, for all the support, man. Good, good times, good times. Um, yeah, I am, uh, gonna kick this host over to Toe. Hey, Toe, do, um. Do twenty today and I'll ship you ten. So, yeah, we're gonna do, I'm gonna throw a little extra juice for you guys for giving us so much support. We love doing this, so Toe's going to do. Twenty dollar giveaways. I'm gonna throw an extra ten to him. Do it twice and, uh, yeah, thank you, guys, man. I really, I got a boy girl. Uh, do two tens.
Cool.
It's more fun like that. Give two people a chance, especially with tomorrow, all the big tournaments coming up. Maybe somebody uses that fifteen dollars to win the seventy-five K tomorrow. Um, but yeah, let me see. But yeah, I'm gonna kick that over. Remember PC in my chat, PC and Toe and give Toe a follow, man. This is my dude. He works hard as fuck. That's my partner in crime. Make sure to give him some love when you get over there. But alright, boys, I'm gonna get out of here. Have a good weekend, man. Enjoy yourselves today, kids.
I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Alright, see you, buddy. Let me send that over real quick. Alright, boys. Take care, guys.
Alright, guys, here we go. Gonna get this giveaway. Going here. Uh, no extra luck, no cost. Hundred tick max, go. Alright, starting this thing off. Thanks, guys, like I said. Uh, it is going, it is going. Here comes the host from sixes. And the giveaway is off. Get in there, get in there, they're getting rid of two ten dollar giveaways. You can have your choice. I can send it to you on America's Card Room. Through player to player transfer, or I can send it to you across PayPal. You let me know what works for you. If you do win. Um, the giveaway, make sure you message me if you, uh, which way you want it. And, uh, screen name and/or email so that I can get it to you. So make sure you get in there. They're streaming in, they're streaming in, they're streaming in. Like I said. Uh, this replay is gonna be on the YouTube channel, so make sure you check that one out. Six is coming in with the twenty months. No keyword. No keyword. Uh, thank you for that, uh, sixes twenty months like a boss. The hype is real, the hype is real. Here they come. Here they come, here they come. Trey Kid, thanks for the follow. Marty, I don't know if I got to you. Thank you for the follow. Oh, y'all, get in there. Ticks, tick, ticks. Get your ticks, get your ticks. Tickety, tick, tickety, tick, tick, tickety, tick, 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 ticks. We got, we got a decent amount of people in there. Get in there, get in there, get in there. Exclamation point ticket space max will do the trick. Pat, you have, I'll help you out, Pat. Where you at? Pat, you are at sixty-one tickets, so you have up to a hundred, thirty-nine tickets more. Who else is in that category where they didn't get all the tickets possible? Ginger, you only have one ticket. Trey Kid only have one ticket, ticket, exclamation point ticket space ninety-nine for you guys. Eeks got one ticket. Westface got one ticket, BQ, BDBQ, one ticket, Mark Ellis, Web Willer, all got one ticket, all you guys. Exclamation point ticket space ninety-nine. To get into the giveaway. Get in there, guys. Get in there. Get in there. Space, not flies. Space, not flies, Trey. Just like BDQ, BDQ did. There we go. He just did it. Pat, I'm working too hard. What? What? Two more minutes. It's the two-minute window. Trey, I think you got it. Let me check. Web Willer, Westface, you guys are the only ones left. We only have one ticket. Marcos Beast lurking. There you go, there you go. Here comes cat. Right at the buzzer. Alright, guys, I think it's time. Web Willer, exclamation point ticket, just like you see uh, some people doing up above. Uh, let me look at you. Oh, no, you're good, Webb. You got it. You got it. You're good. Thank you, Fallon. I appreciate that. I hope you win hips today too. Trey get in, good, good. Westface, exclamation point ticket, space ninety nine. You got thirty seconds. Thirty seconds. Make sure you hit the follow button too, right about there on your screen. Alright, guys, we're pulling it. Uh, there he is, right at the buzzer. Everyone's good. Alright, cool. Closing the giveaway, we're doing two winners. Winner number one is Quark. That guy's famous for winning everywhere. What? And Westface at the buzzer. Alright, guys, you guys win ten bucks each. Whisper me, let me know if you want it on A C R, if you want it on PayPal and then let me know your A C R screen name. Or the PayPal email address. I should send it to you. Like I said, we do this one every Saturday, me and my main man, Crazy Sixes. And uh, we'll be back next Saturday as well. For those of you in the toe army, um, not streaming tomorrow, I'm traveling. I will be gone next week, but I will be back. Um, for the study stream. So there is that. I'm gonna throw the host over to somebody. You know what? Let's throw it over to, should we go someone small or someone bigger? I'm gonna go to G G Reggie. G J Reggie. I don't think I've thrown another host in quite a long time. Alright, guys, uh, that's it. And I will see you later. Peace.